All right, I'd like to call this August 7th, 2014 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps. Councilman Albright.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Uh, would everyone stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Amen. Coach Dutton, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance. In the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I think we have some visitors. Be amazed, we normally don't have near this many people in here.
(laughing).
All right, we're gonna honor the Attendant Under All-Star Team from Cookville and Putnam County that competed the Cal Ripken All-Star Competition. And I have a proclamation here to read for you guys, I'm gonna sign it, and then we'll take a picture with as many folks as we can possibly get in the picture. I don't know, I guess just team members if we want to, coaches if you can try, but we'll just try the team members at first, see if we have enough room. Whereas local coaches and league board members selected a team of 10 and under baseball All-Stars to represent Cookville and Putnam County recently in Cal Ripken All-Star Competitions, and whereas by the efforts of the esteemed 10 and under Putnam County All-Stars, great achievements have been made, and whereas the team participated in the Cal Ripken All-Star District Tournament June 19th through 23rd, and by doing so advanced to the state level July 4th through the 6th, and whereas after winning the prestigious state title, the All-Star Team gained momentum and the opportunity to travel and compete in the regional tournament held in Matthews, North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Matt Swallows, Mayor of the City of Cookville, do hereby offer heartiest congratulations and sincere appreciation to the Putnam County 10 and Under All-Star Baseball Team for their hard work, determination, and accomplishments during the 2014 Cal Ripken Tournament Series, the 7th day of August 2014. Congratulations, guys. (applause). Might be better if we just get the team to stand up here in front of us, would that be all right? Do you think? Does that work? You think you can get everybody? If the team would come up and just maybe stand right here. They're tall, we might want to stand. (laughing). Probably have room for the coaches if anybody wants to get up here.
Coaches, do you wanna? Come on up.
Eat one with a backup. You always need a plan B. There you go.
Take her up.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Yeah, we'll give y'all time, you don't have to sit here if you don't want to. (laughing). We have a long agenda. Thanks for coming, though, good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
There goes the crowd. Amazing.
There goes the crowd.
Yeah.
All right. Item 1, consider approval of agenda as presented, do we have additions, subtractions from the agenda?
Need to add one item, item 22, need to consider approval of a bid for a backhoe Public Works Department.
All right, do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to old business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 17th, 2014, do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Item 3, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading, ordinance 140713, amending the budget of the Economic Development Fund of the City of Cookville for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2015, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance does amend the budget to recognize some additional revenue as well as expenditure all related to Project Victor. There's been no changes to this budget since first reading, and I'd recommend approval.
Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, on to the consent agenda. Item 4, set a date September the 4th, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140814, annexation of properties located on Bennett Road and identified as parcels 72, 73, 73.01, and 74.01 on tax map 64, and establishing the zoning for the area, and resolution 140815, adopting plan of services for the same. And item 5, set a date September the 4th, 2014, for a public hearing on ordinance 140815, rezoning 420 and 430 Peak Drive and 412 Blake Circle from RS10 Single Family Residential to RM8 Multi-Family Residential. Do I have motion for approval on the consent agenda?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none?
For yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item 6, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 140612, rezoning 1100 South Willow Avenue from LM Light Manufacturing to CG General Commercial, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the general location of the property being considered for rezoning. Here's a closer view of it. Aerial view of it. Um, this rezoning was initiated by Danny Kirby of First Commercial Real Estate on behalf of the property owners Broad Street Properties. This property is identified as parcel 98 on tax map 65, and it consists of approximately 40 acres. It has frontages, you can see here, on South Willow Avenue and Green Gate Lane, it's also bordered by I-40 to the north. I'm sure you're familiar with this site, it's the previous to the location of Norwalk Industries. It's currently contiguous with CG zoning, which is the requested zoning to the north and to the west, with RM14 zoning to the south, and with RS15 Single Family Residential to the east. The petitioners indicate that the purpose of the request is to allow them to develop this property for commercial purposes. Our future land use plan, which is in the Cookville 2020 Plan, indicates that the property could be best used for mixed-use commercial industrial development. The CG zoning classification does fall under this land use category. Uh, we, the request has been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I think this is the best use for this.
Have you had any phone calls about it or anything?
No, no opposition to it. We've had some questions about what was going on, but it's just a rezoning.
Okay. Anything else? I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item 7, consider resolution 140814, authorizing the participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Safety Grant Program, sponsors Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to present an opportunity for us this evening. This resolution will authorize to the City of Cookville to provide a matching sum, the dollar amount is $2,911.40. Uh, this is an annual program that the TML Risk Management Pool offers, it's called their Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program. If this grant is awarded and the resolution is required to submit with the grant submission, uh, the grant would provide money for 10 hearing protection devices, 100 traffic cones, 20 safety vests for the Public Works Department. In addition, we're asking for funding for 25 firefighting hoods, 53 safety vests, and 12 pair of rescue extrication gloves for the fire department. So it's an opportunity for us to continue to provide a safe and hazard-free workplace for our employees, um, and save a little bit of money, so I would respectfully request your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Saving money, sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 8, consider resolution 140816, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of three-year capital outlay notes not to exceed $500,000, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, council members, as part of the fiscal year 2015 budget, we had planned on issuing a capital outlay note not to exceed $500,000. This, this note would fund various equipment for the various general fund departments. Um, I've given you a list earlier for the work session Monday, so I won't go through this list, but it's on the board, you have it in your notebooks of the equipment, it's what was included in the budget as well. This would be a three-year note, will make annual installment payments on the principal over the next three years, it'll be paid off in fiscal year 2018, and it's not to exceed a half a million dollars, $500,000. It will require state approval, so if the resolution's approved tonight, I'll submit the request to the comptroller's office to actually issue this debt and start that process, but I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
No.
Seeing none, I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, item 9, consider resolution 140817, authorize the city manager to execute written agreements and instruments to advance up to $1.25 million in incentives and enter into an agreement to tran, to transfer the one-half undivided interest of the City of Cookville's approximately 36 acres located in the northwestern section of the Highlands Business Park to attract the potential industrial prospect Uno, sponsors city manager Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this is the same, uh, resolution that was passed by the county commission Monday in a special call meeting. Uh, this is a good prospect, uh, projection of about 1,000 jobs. I think it's a long way from fruition, but there is, there is a shortage of when they put their lease together and all the site development work that has to be done, the company said they're $2.5 million short. So what this resolution does, and what the counties did, was allow the city and the county to pony up $1.25 million in the event that we get to that point. There's no memorandum of understanding yet, the, like I said, there's a long way to go, and the council will have to approve a lot of documents before that $1.25 million is ever spent. Though, but at this point, it would allow us to continue the negotiations, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I would point out this is conditional on negotiating a memorandum of understanding, uh, both with the city council, Putnam County, and the IDB and all their documents, so this is just the first step to allow that negotiation process to get started.
Just getting the ball rolling. I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Item 10, consider resolution 140818, authorizing the Cookville Electric Department to become a member of the Seven States Power Corporation, sponsors Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, I have some bullet notes for this resolution. The Seven States was created several years ago to operate as a joint equity cooperative. Uh, Cookville Electric Department paid some money in at that time, an assessment, to run the corporation, and also it served as a membership. And, uh, we find out now, some years later, that to fully formalize that membership, we need the board's approval. That's what the resolution's all about, just to, again, formalize membership in seven states. Seven States Corporation will, will basically allow participating members like Cookville to have the potential to participate in generation, transmission, energy services-related type stuff that TVA's currently doing, but we may feel we can do cheaper, uh, which they would appreciate as well, 'cause they're farming a lot of that stuff out now. And, uh, most important, membership in seven states does not obligate us to do anything until we come back and get approval from you guys, so I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Thank you.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Item 11, consider appointment to the Cookville-Putnam County Animal Control Board, sponsors Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, the Animal Control Board was established in the year 2000. It was established as a joint venture between the city and the county to take over the operation of the animal shelter. Animal Control Board membership at that time was to consist of five members, it was the city manager, the county executive, the city council appointee, a county commission appointee, and at that time, the president of the Humane Society. What I'm asking you to do tonight is to replace that president of the Humane Society with a member from the Friends Group. Uh, that's the Friends of Cookville-Putnam County Animals that purchased the property for our new shelter and donated it to the city, and has, uh, generated a lot of donations for the facility, and I think they have asked for a seat on the board, and I think it's very fitting that they have some representation on the board. Uh, the president of the Humane Society has not served on that board for years, so I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I definitely think it's a good move because the Friends of Cookville-Putnam County Animals have done a tremendous job of moving this forward, so I definitely think they need a voice on the board.
Yes, they've got the passion and the commitment to, to serve. Definitely.
I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 12, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a lease with the Friends of Cookville-Putnam County Animals, sponsor city manager Jim Shipley.
As I stated in previous item, the Friends of the Cookville-Putnam County Animals purchased 9.4 acres, uh, known as the old Shipley Farm on Gainesboro Grade, not close enough kin to me to do me any good, but...
(laughing).
And the shelter facility is gonna utilize about five of those acres, and the remaining property that includes a house and a barn, uh, that's gonna have two dog parks on it, a common area, and the Friends Group would like to, uh, be in charge of the house and the barn and the dog parks. And the lease, uh, we've been working on the terms of the lease, looks like it's gonna be a four- or five-year lease with a monthly renewal thereafter, month-by-month basis. I think their, their mission, according to Linda Weston of that group, is that they would get everything going strong, and then they'd wanna turn it all back over to the city at some point. Uh, but this is, this will lease them that property for $1 a year. It is the property that they bought and paid a substantial amount of money for and donated to the city, uh, so this should help remove liability for the city for any actions they take on that other, the other five acres, or four acres, or whatever it is. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? One thing I wanna point out is this land has absolutely nothing to do with the city manager. Make sure there's no gray area there.
No.
Right, exactly. Make sure there's no gray area there.
Like I said, it wasn't close enough kin to do.
(laughing). All right. You okay?
Yeah, I'm about to choke.
I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 13, consider rejecting all bids received on 7/28/2014, and approve the purchase of six police pursuit vehicles from the state bid contract, sponsors Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, we, uh... My other slides aren't up there. There it is. I'll have to back up and go forward on this here just a minute. Uh, mayor and council, we solicited bids for, uh, police pursuit vehicles. Uh, we did receive two bidders, uh, one, as you can see up there, the Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Columbia, the other from Ford of Murfreesboro. Then we, uh, once those bids come in, we, we looked at the statewide contract, and we can actually do better there. Uh, so I'm gonna recommend that we reject those bids and buy from the statewide contract. Uh, and as you can see, this is the sedans. The, uh, purchase price would be $22,588.59, that's for three sedans. Two of those sedans were budgeted, uh, the third one, we're gonna replace a vehicle that was totaled in a, in a crash. Uh, we did receive an insurance payment, we're still waiting on some more money for that, and then we'll make up the difference with the drug fund. The other three vehicles, uh, are SUVs, all those are, are budgeted. Same rules apply here, uh, we can do better with the statewide contract price, uh, and actually exceed the specs on this vehicle. Vehicle price, $24,829.34, and would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief Evans. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, item 14, consider awarding bids for body armor, uniforms, and emergency response equipment, sponsors Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, we solicited bids for, as you state there, body armor, uniforms, and emergency equipment. Uh, this is the, I'll cover these collectively, if you wish. We're gonna recommend for body armor, law enforcement supply, low bidder meeting specifications. Uh, this is a uniform bid, and of course, those highlighted in yellow are all the low bidders. Uh, as you can see there, the Class A is ASR, public safety, uh, Class B is GALS, uh, ASR on some of the rain gear, uh, also on, uh, rain coats and safety vests is GALS, and then bluegrass uniforms for badges. Uh, then on emergency equipment, uh, most of that emergency equipment was low bidder meeting specifications as law enforcement supply, with the exception of, uh, one item there for trucker's last house, the Dominator, and also the transport seats, uh, and then GT distributors with the corner LEDs and GALS for the transport seats for the sedans. Those other transport seats are the ones for the SUVs, which are different. And all those are low bidder meeting specifications, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, chief. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
There's a which way to go at this point.
All right. You're on the roll, Cookville.
Item 15, consider approval to purchase two pre-owned vehicles for Criminal Investigation Division, sponsors Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, we, uh, of course, during budget time, decided to try to purchase these with the drug fund. Uh, we did find two pre-owned 2012 Dodge Chargers, uh, we would be purchasing those from the Missouri State Highway Patrol, uh, through their fleet sales program. Uh, the benefit for, for these vehicles, if they are pursuit vehicles, uh, they do have the heavy alternators, heavy-duty alternators, and shocks, and those kind of things normally associated with a police vehicle. Uh, we do get the remainder of the factory warranty, and we do get all the maintenance records. Uh, cost per unit is $15,750 for a total cost of $31.5, and as I stated earlier, it is a drug fund purchase, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, chief. Motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
How did you find out about these vehicles? Is it, uh...
We, we've known about this program for some time, and I know some, the sheriff's department has purchased, uh, some from them before.
Yes.
And I know some other agent, local agency, I think Baxter has as well, and, uh, we just, uh, have never found the opportunity to utilize it. We've always found local vehicles that met our needs, and, and as we looked around a little harder this time, these were, these were just better vehicles.
Yeah.
And we were fortunate enough because these were just now coming off the road and available. A lot of times, they, they go pretty fast.
Yeah. Timing was good.
Well, and you said that, and they're very neat-looking vehicles, and also you said they're all equipped, ready to roll, right?
Ready to roll. And, and they usually pull their, them off the road, I, of course, stated this in work session, right around 50,000 to 55,000 miles is what they, they say, and we get to go and, and pick from the letter, so to speak.
That's good.
Any questions? All vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 16, consider approval to renew the lease for police patrol motorcycles, sponsors Chief Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, it's time to renew our lease for Harley-Davidson motorcycles. Of course, as you know, we have six of those, and the lease is through Boswell's. Uh, monthly lease per vehicle for motorcycle is $283.29 for total annual cost for the lease, $20,396.88, and it is a budget item, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, chief. Do I have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
For yes votes, motion carries.
You sure you don't have anything else?
I think that's it.
You're on a roll.
Yeah.
All right, item 17, consider approval to purchase two Demo E-Series ACLS manual defibrillators. Anybody else wanna take this one? Self-source provider, sponsors the fire department, Chief Roger Fuquay.
I'm not gonna make fun of you. (laughing).
And I have to explain it now.
Yeah, good luck.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking approval to purchase two Demo 12 lead heart monitors. Uh, they're Zoll manufactured. Back in 2012, we bought two and submitted bids for those, and only one company could, could bid on them, so I have a self-source letter from Zoll manufacturer. These are units that was carried by their sales reps, and they take them back to the factory and, uh, take them apart, go through them, and, and replace anything that needs to be replaced, make sure everything's in specs, and then, uh, then they sell them. So this is the closest thing than new that we can get. Two of them for a purchase price of $30,000, that includes, uh, some upgrades we had done to them, and some batteries and chargers for it and stuff. And a new one would be, one new one would be about that price. And this will also, this will now give us a 12-lead, uh, heart monitor at each station, and the, these are something we use every day. The ones we're replacing now are about 15 years old. And I ask you for your approval.
Thank you, Deb. Motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
What are, what's the normal life, shelf life of these?
Uh, the ones we have now are 15 years old, and we're using one that we took out of service in 2012, parts off of it to keep the other one going.
Wow.
So they're, they're ready to, and we use these every day.
Yeah. Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
For yes votes...
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry.
Motion carries.
Item 18, consider approval to purchase replacement server for the utility billing system, self-source provider, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, back in 2001, the city implemented a new, we went to a new utility billing software system. At that time, we purchased a computer server from our business partner, the, the company that supports our utility billing system. We purchased a new server from them at the time, it's an IBM I Series. That server is now 13 years old. It desperately needs to be replaced. Working with our IBM business partner, ASI, uh, the new server to replace that, the server itself is $13,444. partner, ASI, uh, the new server to replace that, the server itself is $13,444. In order to have up to 30 concurrent users on at one time, there's additional software we have to purchase. That's $6,250. We'd like to purchase one year of software maintenance, which is through IBM, to, uh, help support that machine if there is anything that might occur that first year, in addition to we get any software updates that IBM might come out with in the meantime over the next year, which they do that quite often. So that's $2,845.20. Like to also purchase a, a three-year, 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week maintenance agreement on that. It comes with a hardware, or a hardware maintenance agreement for three years on it, but it's just nine to five. There's potential it could go down late in the evening. We want it up and running the next morning when we come to work, so that's an additional $1,000. For ASI to migrate us over to this new machine, they're looking at, uh, three to four days potentially of, of trying to get this machine up and running for us over the weekend, over a weekend. That's $4,160. Total price for this replacement server is $27,699.20. It is a budgeted item, and I would ask your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
I'm surprised you got 13 years.
Yes, I was getting ready to say.
I, I think with these last two items, we can tell that, um, the city of Cookeville uses their, their equipment until there is no use left practically.
Maximum life.
Or give it to leisure services.
Exactly like Missouri State.
Couldn't figure that out, how we could pass that, yeah, but...
All right, any other questions? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 19. Consider approval to purchase UV replacement bulbs from the self-source provider for the wastewater treatment plant. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're requesting authorization to purchase up to 32 UV replacement bulbs at our wastewater plant disinfection, UV disinfection unit. The disinfection equipment is made up of 36, it's, uh, 36 bulbs, and each bank's got two banks, and it's, so it has 72 total bulbs. They're a single-source item. We can only purchase them through the manufacturer, UV, uh, Trojan Technologies. The cost of the bulbs, $418, and we would like to purchase up to 32. We've ordered, I think, 16 so far, and realized we were going to get up over our limit, so we need to purchase up to 32 for $13,376. The bulbs, this is sort of a quick picture, they set down in the affluent flow going into the creek, right before it goes to creek, and disin, and it's, it's a disinfection unit, and it's just those bulbs, and there's a lot of banks of those, so we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
How long do those bulbs last?
Uh, they got like a fifth, a 5,000, I think they have a recommended about a 5,000 hours. We've had 30,000, up to 30,000 some hours on them. They use them until there's redundancy there, so they'll use them till they go out or have problems, and then just replace them as they need.
Any questions? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 20. Consider awarding bid for two MFC controllers and chlorine and pH analyzers for the water treatment plant. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we took, uh, price proposals on, uh, multi-function, multi-function controllers at our water treatment plant. These, uh, these controllers, uh, basically monitor chlorine, pH, and they have room to add two other parameters to do that in the future. Uh, we have, currently have five units. Uh, the two we're replacing are old units, are 15-plus years old. We can't get parts for them any longer. The three remaining units are, are still in good shape and can be rebuilt, and we have replacement parts on the shelf. These two, uh, units that we bid will replace the two older units and will be comparable with our, our, our current units. And so we'd recommend Chemical Feed Systems Incorporated, the $24,111.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 21. Consider awarding bid for one SUV, and sponsor is Mr. Tony Peak from the Electric Department.
Uh, mayor and council, we're bidding a sport utility vehicle. Uh, open bids and recommend a low bidder meeting specifications for Ford of Murfreesboro for that vehicle. That is budgeted, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peak.
Recommend your approval.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions?
Seeing none, all vote?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the added agenda item. Item 22, which, uh, we're awarding a bid for a backhoe. Uh, sponsor is Public Works Department, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently, uh, opened bids for a backhoe. Uh, the low bidder meeting specs was diamond equipment for $88,222. I would recommend approval. That is a budgeted item as well.
It's there, for sure. Who's got the clicker?
Not up here.
Oh!
You recommend diamond equipment?
Diamond equipment, yes, sir.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments?
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, this is part of the program where we open up the floor. If you hear from citizens and/or delegations, anybody want to come forward? Uh, we just ask that you keep it to three minutes if possible, and if you'd state your name, too, please.
Um, I'm Deborah Sam. Um, hi. First off, I'd like to thank everyone in this room for their care and dedicated service to the well-being of our community. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, I'm here today because as a citizen and community member, I'm concerned about the effects of light pollution on the many other plant and animal species that share our 20 or so square miles with us. Yes, I could talk about the effects on wellness light pollution has on humans, health, the increased risk in cancer or depression, for example, or financially, the decrease in worker productivity, or that the conservative calculation is that our country in a year spends $1.5 billion in wasted outdoor light. That's light not directed at its intended function. However, what is really important for me today is ecological light pollution, and that we make lighting decisions without enough awareness of our impact on others. And I'm not just saying city, I'm saying people. So 50% of species are nocturnal or primarily active at twilight. Artificial lights seriously affect their lives by limiting when or otherwise affecting the major activities of mating, finding food, and hiding from predators. Artificial lights can also cause disorientation in animals. Large categories of life that have had at least some species studied include mammals, birds, including songbirds, amphibians, reptiles, insects, and plants, including trees. Yes, progress costs. However, I do not want to live in a world where we are so willing to sacrifice the lives and well-being of others without even a thought. We barely know how light pollution affects humans. We certainly do not know the extent of our impact. Yeah, this is great and all, and so what? Well, if, when we leave, and we are all aware of what that street light or the various kinds of lights we see cost, that is a huge first step. With that respect, what can we do, really? Then there's the realization of the responsibility that comes with the aware, that comes with the awesome power we have to harness amazing electricity for light, that we humans can change the global landscape physically, or in this case energetically, is outstanding. And we need to proceed with care, especially in the case of light waste. All the technology for eliminating it already exists. Some of it, the light switch, has been around almost as long as a light bulb. Okay, wonderful, and why should city officials and staff in those roles care? Well, while I am just one citizen standing here, the 2010 citizen survey in question eight, natural environment, found that both protection of wildlife habitats and preservation of farmland was important to 70% of respondents with an opinion. And some of the development goals stated in the Cookeville 2030 plan that was adopted during this council include to promote and support developments that are sustainable, have a low impact on the environment, so on, and to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life in Cookeville while encouraging a more harmonious and higher standard of development. Also, some of the listed methods for implementation that would apply in reducing light pollution citywide include planning commission, project review, zoning, codes enforcement, utility extension policies, capital budget, citizen education, and the Cookeville City Council. All these methods involve those in this room, from creating ordinances to implementing them. I want to stop for a moment and applaud the existing efforts in reducing light pollution by the city, and I want to encourage even more reduction. And as a citizen, I would like to know on a regular basis more of what is being done and what is planned to be implemented as we grow. And we are growing, um, and as some of what was voted on tonight shows, uh, we are poised to grow even more. Um, so let us do it with the least harm possible. Whether it is what the municipality controls directly, streetlights and lights around and on its buildings and parking lots, or it is what the municipality controls indirectly, industrial, commercial, and residential via standards and zoning, I ask that all fronts be eventually addressed. Municipalities can make a difference. There are examples. Here in Tennessee, Collierville in eastern Shelby County, it, for one. As we develop, infill in those 6,413 acres currently considered vacant. Now's the time to create new standards for lighting for ourselves, ones that don't date back unreexamined to the 1930s, when the practice of offloading excess energy from the grid at night originated. Let us experience the beauty of the rare decorative light, the beauty of the night sky, the beauty of darkness, and the beauty of restful slumbers in the knowledge of power wielded well. Will you all join me this evening when we are drawing a blind or entering our homes and holding a thanks in our hearts for the electric department, and for the nearest street light or non-full-focus design light we have, and can we reimagine what is necessary, and what it would look like with only necessary lighting at night? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sam.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Next, third, wait, it's next, the third Thursday, there's a concert in the park, and this past Monday, um, there was the last community band concert, which was quite well-attended and quite a lovely concert. And, um, of course, if you rush out of here, you still have plenty of time to get your vote in, and I suggest you doing that if you don't, if you haven't already done it.
About 47 and a half minutes.
Who's counting?
Who's counting? That's what I was told.
Hey, welcome, Liz. Good to see you back from North Carolina.
Yes, Liz is back.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Yes, sir.
Do you have to be on the agenda to speak?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Please, I'm sorry.
State your name.
Say something good for you.
I'm Bill McElhaney. Uh, we moved here a year ago. Uh, August 15th will be our first-year anniversary, and I wanted to congratulate the city government for providing a, a very livable city for us. Uh, we lived in Nashville for 28 years, and then down by Von Or, Tennessee for 13, and as we got older, we had to downsize and, uh, find a place to move to. And, uh, in considering a lot of places, we settled on Cookeville. Uh, we have some attachment to Cookeville by our three children, having gone to Tennessee Tech. Two boys in engineering and our daughter in veterinarian, pre-vet, and, uh, she teaches over Highland Rim School, and her husband Rick is a veterinarian out at the Ragland Riley Veterinary Clinic. And, um, so we've had somewhat of an attachment to Cookeville, uh, in the past, but, um, Cookeville for us has really, uh, been a dream come true in being able to, uh, live where we have all the services. As I got tired mowing yards and, uh, working on equipment, uh, we had lived on seven acres, uh, and it, uh, required a lot of effort, but now we can play golf quite a bit. In fact, we were out this morning at Rockwood, uh, and, we try to play as much as we can, keep, keep the blood circulating. But, uh, I just wanted to, uh, express my thanks for the city government in the past and, of course, the present. And, um, my wife may come to talk to you because she's taken a, uh, the Enzor Sync to heart. Uh, we've done a lot of activities in the outdoors, and, uh, that was something, it's maybe not a spectacular thing, but it's a nice thing. My wife goes over and walks the Enzor Sync quite often. And from what I can observe, at one time in the past, uh, maybe when that neighborhood was being developed, uh, that was, uh, quite a nice little park because there's some posts still there where it was, um, interpreters, uh, stations through there, and, but the trails are still there, and my wife has walked it quite a number of times now. Uh, just across the street, we're in, uh, St. James West condos there. So thanks again for, uh, having a place where we can come and enjoy it, because within about at least two miles, maybe less than that, we've got all the services that you could ever expect to have. We can walk to church. We attend the First United Pentecostal Church there on Walnut, and, uh, we can walk, could walk to most any place we want to, including Walmart. So thanks again for providing us a place to retire and, uh, live out the rest of our days, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McElhaney.
Thank you.
It's nice to hear good things about Cookeville.
It is, and this week you could...
Pretty fond of Cookeville, too.
This week you can walk to the fair, too. All right, anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.